I shall.
Yeah.
Is it timed?
That's right.
You excited, Pal?
Yes. Yeah.
It is?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, if we did that, then we had to know.
Okay, okay.
I'll get with who they brought and get your files.
Yeah, because there's somebody I already talked to you about before.
Good evening and welcome to today's work session. Today is Monday, May the 8th, 2023. Time is now 3:00 PM. The work session in the city council. We're now coming to order. We have some items on for discussion today. Item one is some solutions on homeless. Item two is Winterfest presentation by Amanda Court.
Recording in progress.
Item three is Eckhart Elementary School site update by Mr. Lee Paul. And then item four is lodging tax advisory board interviews for the nine people that have put in their application for the tax advisory, lodging tax advisory board. So that's where we get started with the item one, solutions for homelessness discussion.
She got a binder she sent along.
Yeah.
She turned it down? She had two binders.
I did, actually. Good afternoon, everyone and everyone present. I have a presentation that Donna was going to activate for us here. So not only is homelessness something that I deal with on a professional level, being a police officer, but it's also very personal for me. My mom was homeless the last 20 years of her life. So I know this issue on a personal and a professional level. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And then if anybody has any questions about her life, I'll be happy to share that with you. So starting here. Homelessness is a complex issue. I have the definition from HUD here.
It's start control. Can we get that in presentation?
In presentation, though? Donna, can you press it to slideshow, please?
Start control.
You're okay.
There you go. Just click from beginning on the left. Perfect.
Okay, you can go to the next slide. Perfect. So there is four categories for homelessness. I suggest that we target literally homeless. It varies on the nuances of community. But for this purpose, my suggestion is to focus, target the literally homeless. Next slide. There we go. Homelessness is very cyclical. It has to do with mental health issues and substance abuse issues. But also in conjunction with that, there's a lot of health issues for people who are experiencing homelessness. So this kind of shows or diagram what's happening to people who are experiencing homelessness. It's not a criminal issue. However, law enforcement is often the first contact for people that are experiencing homelessness across the country. So it behooves us to be a part of the solution. Okay, next slide. In March, when I gave this presentation to the city manager and the mayor and a few others, to date, we had received 29 calls for service regarding a transient problem. I just checked this morning and we're at 99 calls for service to this year for calls for service for transient problems. No other call type is listed in this documentation. So if the officers are dispatched to a theft that happens at Safeway, it wouldn't necessarily be represented on here because that's not a transient problem. That is a theft. So that's where the numbers kind of correlate there. Not only does this include the calls for service for, this only includes calls for service for officers. It doesn't show any time that the fire department or EMS or any other department responded to a transient issue. Go ahead to the next slide. So as you can see from this graph, it starts out from 2015 and it goes to 2022. Of our calls for service for transit issues plateauing in 2019 with 370 calls for service strictly for the call type transient problem.
Now, low end is about 53, 54, or about 38?
38. 38 calls for service in 2015. And it just slowly matriculates up and takes a pretty high jump in 2019 to 370.
We didn't start tracking 2015 right at the start of the year. For my other number, we started like in the summer. I'd say that's what that's like.
Detective Blake, how do you define transient calls for service? Like what does that mean? That someone calls and says, there's a transient person on my property? Or what does that consist of?
That could be it. It depends on how the call is received by our dispatch center. So there's a lot of pieces that go into that puzzle and our dispatchers have to categorize the calls. So it just depends on what's coming in.
Okay.
Most of the time, it's about them being somewhere they're not supposed to be. Or if someone thinks they can't be there.
Next slide. So in Trinidad, homelessness is a complex issue again. And it's somewhat unconventional on its face value. We have a lot of quasi homeless people or what I consider quasi homeless people. People who are couch surfers going from house to house. Maybe don't have a residence of their own, but maybe they stay on a friend's couch or a family member's couch. And because of this, whatever we decide to do will have to have strict guidelines and enforce. We also, the city had done a study with the University of Denver in 2018. And that study showed that there was 30, or I'm sorry, 63 participants in that study that were considered homeless since at that time. In 2020, there was also a point in time survey done. And at that time, there was 12 persons who were experiencing homelessness denoted during that survey, which I don't feel is the full picture of what the issue was in 2020. And I have all of that documentation and I can give that to you all. In the, this is our city of Trinidad municipal code for public parks. It's pretty short, one, one and a half sentences here. Can you go to the next slide, Donna? This is Alamosa's no camping ordinance. So myself and Lieutenant Tahanavich went, we were in Alamosa for a training. And while I was there, we spoke with Captain Mestes, who is kind of the lead at the Alamosa Police Department for their homelessness coalition. And he drove us out to their encampment site. We spent a lot of time with him. He sent me down all of their documents on how they started everything, including their no camping ordinance. Actually, their no camping ordinance is two pages. That doesn't even show you the full page, their full camping ordinance here. This was put into place by Alamosa PD because of the Ninth Circuit Court decision that came down regarding public space. So they have a pretty robust no camping ordinance. Next slide. So I'm going to kind of go through these photographs. Some of them are a little grainy. They were taken by photos or via cellphone while I was talking to Captain Mestes. So this is St. Benedict's encampment site in Alamosa. It's located at 2400 Old Stanford Road in Alamosa, Colorado. It's about 2.3 miles from the city center or where the police department is. That's where they fenced in their encampment site. They started with lots spaced out, but no structures there and allowed people to camp in those lots. The city provided, the Alamosa City provided them with restroom facilities, a place to charge their devices. They also provided Wi-Fi out in the encampment area, which really helped with people coming into the town and using Wi-Fi from public spaces or businesses. Everybody needs Wi-Fi to get on their phones and do whatever they need to do. You can flip through these pictures, Donna. So this just kind of shows how far it goes. They have a campsite rules there. The city provides water surveillance, a fence around the perimeter, snow removal up until the point of entry for emergency purposes. And obviously, the land on which the encampment is located. The city also handles the trash at the encampment. According to the captain, he estimates that about 45 people are staying in the camp or otherwise homeless. They also estimated that there was about 30 people. And so this was in February of this year, just to give you an idea. Another 30 people living in vehicles throughout the city and another 30 that were homeless in their emergency shelter. They have La Puente down there that's pretty active in their community. Before anybody's allowed to stay in the encampment, they have to sign liability waivers. There's rules and regulations that have to be signed. Priority is given to veterans and they do not allow children, but they do allow pets there. They also coordinate monthly volunteer cleanups. And volunteers are required to sign waivers to participate in the coalition. La Puente, the shelter there, gives everybody upon arrival into the San Luis Valley, if they need it, a tent, a cell phone, a flashlight, a sleeping bag and a sharps container. La Puente also handles all the maintenance for the huts that you see here. Luckily for Alamosa PD, they also have a co-responder program with one civilian who's employed that reaches out to the people that are living in the encampment. They have a lot of outreach groups that are involved, churches and other people who give the folks that are staying in the encampment a ride to and from town several times a day. Right now, or back in February, when I met with Captain Mestes, they were having a big problem with hoarding on the premises. So they were working on a solution for that. I'm sure it looks a lot different now than it did back in February when I was there. The space there is abundant. They have no plans to change where the location is. And they've also, the coalition has created a matrix for resources for that encampment. So people who are staying there have the ability to get their hands on what the resources they may need. If there's any violations that happen at the encampment, the police department has the ability to remove the person who is offending. And they also have funds for bus tickets. Right now, the Alamosa Coalition, the homeless coalition, is working on a cottage village just near this encampment site. And they're also going to be moving their suitcase and closer to that, which will also serve as a warming shelter during extreme weather. Because we don't know, Alamosa gets brutally cold. Members of the coalition are approved, are by application and then approved. The one thing that stood out to us when we were down there is that these huts that they've erected do not have any heat. And because of that, they lost two huts due to fires for people bringing in a source of heat that shouldn't have been inside one of those small huts. They also require that their code enforcement officers, whom they have three of, go check on the camp at least twice a day. And they have rotating shifts Monday through Sunday. So that kind of gives you a brief overview about what's happening over in Alamosa at the St. Benedict's campsite. So if you want to go to the next slide, Donna? So I have copies of all this that I can provide you. They're copied their no camping ordinance, the rules of the campsite, the trespass notice, things of that nature. I can give that all to you when you're ready for that. Next slide. So this-
Before you go on from the last time you did the presentation to us, have you checked with them to see how things are going in Alamosa?
So the only person that I had contact with is Brett Phillips, who is their street outreach coordinator. He's been really helpful to me and said that he would be willing to come down and speak to anybody or any group that would have any additional questions about what they have going on.
Just wondering if there was any progress with this?
I haven't, sure, I haven't checked in with Captain Mestes. That's probably something I could do and maybe take a ride down there and see how they camp looking.
Because when you met with them, what month was that that you met with them?
It was February, I believe.
So it's been recent, okay.
Right. It was pretty recent. So I started doing some of my own research. Denver has the Colorado Village Collaborative. And they've done a few different things with spaces up in Denver that are a little different than what's happening down in Alamosa. So this is a picture from their beloved community village that's like a tiny home village. These huts don't have bathrooms or kitchens. They're just a place for people to sleep. And then they have community bathrooms, community kitchen and a community laundry facility. I have reached out to the director of the Colorado Village Collaborative. I have not heard back from them. I think they're having a transition of directors and not sure how high I am on their priority list at the moment. But this just kind of shows you some other ideas on how to address the homeless issue. Next slide. So they also have, the Colorado Village Collaborative also has SOS spaces or safe outdoor spaces for people to camp in that aren't really necessarily encampments, so to speak. These tents are provided by the coalition. At this time, this was kind of a creation due to COVID-19 and people needing to maintain space from one another and not being able to be in public. So this is kind of where that was born from, the SOS space.
I did talk to someone recently that they were saying that in this particular encampment, they're struggling with it. Go get that.
So this just shows you how much one of these tents costs. Basically, tents are limitless. You can, there's a plethora of them to choose from, but this is just one of them here. Next slide. This is another example of a tiny home village in Oakland, California. Community members coming together and building these tiny homes. So the thing that I think that we really want to avoid is what you see in this picture. This is actually a picture from Denver. We want to stop this sort of thing from happening by giving them a space to have their belongings in a secure area where it's authorized to be there without like a hoarding issue happening. Next slide. So at the request of the city manager, I kind of looked up some different ideas for tiny homes. I've been in contact with palletshelter.com. They're supposed to be emailing back what their cost model is, but I have all of their information there. They also have a lot of good resources about debunking myths on encampments. And there's also places you could buy blueprints for shelters. They also have the Conestaga huts, which range about $2,500. There's other options from Lowe's and Home Depot. And then I found a ball string to roof. Next slide. So on the right-hand side are the Conestaga huts. And I have a video of how they built them. And I believe this one was in Oregon or Washington. I can't remember exactly. Just some different options of what there is out there for a more permanent structure as opposed to a tent. Next slide. And then these are the ones that I kind of priced out through Lowe's, Home Depot, which are substantially more than what those sheds or the Conestaga huts go for. They also have an abundance of options for shower facilities. If you go to the next slide, there's pictures of the inside of what it looks like to have one of the portable shower facilities there. And then bathroom facilities, again, there's a lot of options out there. I just kind of put some up so that you can see what different pieces would need to be put in place to really get this off the ground and to do it correctly. And then just a laundry facility. I believe this one came out of California. Another barrier that I'm very familiar with is our homeless population being able to receive their mail. As you probably know, I sit on the Housing Authority Board. And something that comes up frequently is people who come in to try to get housing through the Housing Authority. Their workers can't get back in contact with the people who are on these waiting lists because they don't have a residence or they don't have a place where they can get mail. Not only for housing, but other things that people get mail for, medical, VA benefits, employment. A lot of times you have to have a place where you can receive mail. So that's something else that would have to be taken into consideration. Next slide. So I kind of went through the COPS report, which is the Office for Community Oriented Policing Survey Services. And they have a blueprint on how to do an encampment the right way. And so I kind of broke down what their steps are. And from that, I conducted a very informal survey of some of our homeless people around town. And this was at the beginning of April. And I spoke to about 15, 17 homeless people in a two-hour span of time. All I did was park my car at Chino Park and just walk down. And it was pretty easy to get in contact with about 15 to 17 of our local homeless people. So from that COPS report, the next step would be to bring something to our city council for buy-in and approval from your perspective. And then also addressing our no camping or our city parks ordinance would have to be much more robust.
Before you go on, could you tell us, you know, you talked to some homeless. Did they have any, give you any ideas for answers that would help them?
So some of the people wouldn't talk to me at all because I'm a cop. Some folks didn't like the fact that I was down there just talking to people casually. So I'll put that out there. Some people that I talked to were brand new to town, literally. The very first person I spoke with was in town less than 24 hours. And he was just dropped off here, passing through Texas to Denver. So he was like, where do I get a shower? How do I know? But then all, so I started talking to him for, it was just very much happenstance. So I'm starting to talk to him first and then suddenly there's like 10 people around me. And as I'm speaking with him about where are you going to shower? Where did you eat? Where are you going to use the bathroom? All these people are chiming in, oh, come here, do this, do that. And it was like they were helping each other to get to those resources. That's how it felt to me, is that it was more of a, it was their own community that they were directing a newbie to those resources. So then you see the other steps that are a part of this. You can go to the next slide. These are, this is the list of people who I feel would be imperative to have as part of the coalition that we would do here. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that. Seems pretty straightforward. Next slide, Donna? So there are challenges that would come with doing any encampment. A lot of our homeless folks are living in solidarity right now. And this would be bringing them into closer proximity to one another. Inevitably, it would, it could potentially have, we could see an influx of homelessness in our community and put straighten out limited resources. And not to mention, there could be pushback from community members. Go to the next slide, Donna? But I think the positives and the benefits far outweigh any challenges that we may see from this. This could give a sense of stability to our homeless population, access to services. If there was a centralized location where people who needed mental health services or services from the Department of Human Services, they could be located at a centralized place. And then it would also allow our public to enjoy the outdoor spaces and improve sanitation. There is a New York Times story about a gentleman, and it's called Million Dollar Murphy. I'm sorry, Million Dollar Murray, a homeless person out of Reno, who utilized police detox, fire, med services to the point where he racked up over a million dollar bill in the city from all the resources they were putting into this one person over a span of, I think it was a few years. I'd have to go back and look at the article. But instead of putting all of that money on funding officers to go out and men to go out and detox and hospital, if there was a place where somebody could receive services that they desperately needed, that could potentially save a lot of money down the road. Last slide, maybe? Yes.
Questions from Congress?
Charlie, a question for you. When would this centrally be located? I read a little bit about the Shelter Villages, the pallet company. You know, especially in this area in the winter, it could be temporarily removable because they're reinforced with foam insulation and they have aluminum framing along with foam insulation, so.
So that's the million dollar question is where are we going to put it? I know we're going to get pushed back no matter what location we ultimately choose. One thing Jen didn't mention in her slideshow, though, is personally, I was disappointed in what Alamosa had. I think we need to offer better. You know, a lot of these people are not homeless by choice, some are homeless by choice. But we have to have something that is usable and can make some feel a little bit better. You know, have someplace they can bathe, have someplace they can use the bathroom, do their laundry. You know, some people could even possibly from that platform get a job, you know? Just, but right now, they don't have the capability to do that. So where are we going to put this? We've been racking our heads, I mean, since we first talked about it. We actually had this discussion at our cheese conference. Jen came with me last year and Alamosa said, well, look, this is how we're doing it. And then I came and had a discussion with the mayor and then of course, our new city manager. I just think we have to do something. One thing she didn't mention in her slideshow is a lot of those structures are pretty easy to build. I mean, any of us could take it by hammer.
They take it about an hour, which I-
What would be hard to actually construct that ourselves? So, but where? Where are we going to put it? You know, I looked at behind me and I recognized a lot of faces. I think everybody in the community wants to do something and people are doing portions of something. I just think if we had someone take the reins and try to pull all these resources together, we could accomplish something together as a community. Right now, everybody's just pulling it up in different directions, so. But where? I don't know.
A lot of cities are calling for dignity shelters.
Well, you know, yeah. I mean, there was one that we had talked about in the meeting that we had with the pre-meeting to this meeting. One individual was able to actually, you know, have a place to shower and then got a job and then actually got herself out of that. So that's the way we see it. They can't live there forever. But sometimes it's just that little push that they need to maybe get back into society.
You know, I lived on council when we did that for survey in 2018. And we started talking about it then. For some reason or other, we got sidestepped on the topic. But you know, I, this has been bothering me too for a long time. I went up Commercial Street yesterday. And on the 400 block of North Commercial, there were three people sleeping in the doorway. there were three people sleeping in the doorways, and it was Sunday afternoon. And not only do we have to do this for the homeless people, we have to do it for the other people in Trinidad and for the welfare of the community. If one segment is sick, we're all sick. I mean, you know, we all have, we all have to be whole. But there's three points that I don't think Trinidad has. We need to grow these health, mental health. Do we have good enough mental health care in this facility for those individuals that need it?
We have health solutions.
Are they pretty good about?
The problem is, a lot of them don't want to help. You know, sadly, this last weekend, an individual that could have used the help, and when he was on dedication was doing fine. You know, it's just they don't want the help, they just don't want to help. So, but if we had them where they could be visited every day and, you know, these resources are coming to them, maybe they, maybe they would take that opportunity to help themselves.
The other problem I think we're having is addiction. Do we have enough help for people that are addicted in the community? Is there a facility here that will service us?
We have a couple of facilities.
Oh, do we? Okay. See, I didn't, I'm asking just for my own knowledge. And the third, third part of all this is the nonprofit segment. And I think that is where maybe we need to get started. Find somebody of nonprofit or form a nonprofit to be the point person, the point organization. Let them, you know, because the city can do a lot of things, but we can't do it by ourselves. You know, there's a lot of examples of cooperation between nonprofit and city that if we go together, I think we can be successful. But I agree with you, I think it's something that we definitely need to do. And I never thought, Jennifer, about the amount of money that's spent on emergency calls and things like that. I mean, just the savings in that alone could probably make a pretty good facility.
No, in the end, this is going to help our police department and our community because a lot of people don't know what we can't, can and cannot enforce. You know, last thing we want to do is get involved in a civil suit for violating some rights. So we have to be careful.
It's not fair to individuals that want to use Chimeno Park for it to be monopolized by individuals either. I mean, this is going to be a very sensitive thing. I don't want to belittle one segment of the population against the other, but I think it's something we need to do.
Well, that's a complaint I get quite often, is that people don't feel safe going down there and utilizing the park. Because that's where a lot of the, a lot of it is taking place. But I can't offer them a solution of where they can go somewhere better or, you know, somewhere that will better serve what's going on down there. So, I mean, we fill calls all the time about, you know, can't you move them out? Well, it's a public park, no, I can't. You know, especially during the hours of we utilize parks.
We've had several situations our family, my family has. Some of the individuals that are down there don't lease their, put their dogs on leashes, and that's a danger in of itself, so it's, I understand and I appreciate, Jennifer, your perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
You really did a nice job, Jennifer.
Yes.
You did a lot of work in there. The, I would suggest a solution that, I mean, just to start would, somewhere, and I, again, the question is where. But if we could find, and I don't mean build a camp or anything, but if we build a building, maybe an area where it's closed off at twenty by twenty or something like that, that could be utilized for colder winters and stuff like that, where people can go in and have toilet access and maybe even a shower built to it. And also power electric, because everybody's charging their phones on the street corners and everywhere else in businesses. I've had experience with four or five businesses that I work at had to put actual locks on their outlets because people were just using them. But that might be something that we could look into where it would be a start, and it wouldn't have to be a very big building, metal or something that could be used in the winter and have bathroom, porta potties outside and maybe access to some water. And as long as we have some power outlets in there, because a lot of people are charging their phone and stuff like that. And the only problem would be where, where you put it. And that, I think that would be a good start if we could find a place like that to get started and then, because like you say, if you bring, you start building too confident, you're going to get all kinds of people in there. We're going to run into the same issue, there's going to be more and more people and we can't take care of it. And money is a big issue. As you know, the city not doing too well with, they had to raise utilities and everything else, so it's difficult. But like she suggests, if we could get some people together and form some kind of alliance, like you want to do, maybe an idea like that could really help us to get started. But, you know, the main thing I see is a bathroom. Like, where I work, I deal with this every day here, and, you know, it's an endless problem. They make a mess, I mean, unfortunately, they throw trash there. And, you know, well, back here at J. Chirino, just spent a chunk of money on the back of the football field because those people were camping back there in the trees, and they had to cut it out and clean all that out. And turn right around and they're back again. And it's, like you say, of course, it is private property, we could probably chase them out of there.
There's definitely yes.
But it really is a problem. But I think if we could just find one focal point to start with, to just get started, that would help. And then we can go from there, or maybe we get more people involved.
If I had a focal point for you as a collective group, I think it would be to address the camping ordinance first and foremost. That would be something that would have to happen, so that we could put the other wheels in motion. And to your point about a collaborative effort with some nonprofit, I think that's absolutely where we need to go. But you need to have the point of the spear, so to speak, somebody who's willing to direct where it needs to go to bring those people together, to be able to pull community meetings and things of that nature. So I a hundred percent agree with you that that needs to happen.
Do you know, are there, I know there's individuals that, see, the people that need.
So when I went and did the informal survey, I also stopped by the soup kitchen here. And they've seen a significant decrease in what they're providing for our homeless population because there are so many other organizations or churches that are providing the same, the same, the same thing at Chimeno Park, and they don't have to walk anywhere. So if we could focus some of those other entities, the churches, the nonprofit, if we could focus them on something else, so we're not pulling on the same string, and get everybody involved so they are helping and they have that buy-in, then I think we could really do something good.
I think so.
Let's get some questions from the side.
Detective Ley, the reason that you think we need a no camping ordinance is because of the Boise decision from Oregon, sorry, Oregon, Idaho. And basically, what that decision said was that law enforcement can't correct people not to be in a place unless there is a publicly designated place for people to go. So that's why we would need to establish a community. Yes. Okay. Is Saint Benedict, that encampment, is it run, is La Fuente a sectarian organization? Or is it just a nonprofit that doesn't?
I think it's just a nonprofit.
Okay, I'm fairly certain. Because I think, what I've, I've thought about this a lot too, and I thought, there are people like Pastor Clay, who does a very effective job working with the homeless population. But he comes at it with a religious perspective, and there's a reason he does it, and he's driven by that. But there's got to be a way that perhaps he could be involved in a steering committee that would, because he has a very thorough knowledge of the people. And he's doing the best that he can to help them, I'm sure of that. But maybe he could be involved in some aspects of it and then do other aspects of what he wants to do in terms of his preaching and teaching somewhere else. Because I don't know that the city could, you know, sponsor a religious organization, that probably wouldn't work. So I think he'd be a great person to be involved in that coalition. And I like the other entities that you've suggested. What, do you have any sense of, I heard you say that Alamosa, Alamosa has provided the land, they fenced it, they provide water, snow removal, trash service, electricity.
I assume electricity?
Yes.
Okay.
For charging stations, Wi-Fi. Do you know what that all costs, Alamosa to do all that?
And surveillance.
And surveillance.
I do not, I can certainly find out or reach out to Captain Nessus and this evening give me a breakdown. I think it was obviously money upfront, and now it's sustainable for him because it's not something that he brought up that was problematic.
I think I'm with Councilwoman Grego in that. I'm not sure the city of Trinidad is the entity to head this because we don't have expertise in that. But there are people who have expertise, and I think there are people who are driven to help homeless people and to turn the lives around that would be well-suited to do that in the form of a nonprofit. So I'm supportive of the idea. I think we are going to have to do a lot of getting information and input from people about where they think it would be appropriate to do that. And we're going to want it to be a place that, that would be used. If you put it so far out of town, they want it to be in town because they need bus service and they need restaurants, fast food. So to me, it seems like it would have to be somewhere near to town rather than out of view. So its optics will be important. It will a lot. But I'm glad that you're bringing this to our attention again. I think it's something that we should move on in whatever we can reasonably and fiscally.
Tough one, isn't it? Tough conversation to have. Do you have a dream space somewhere in the backyard? Since you took our conversation and said, okay, let's start from somewhere, this is the beginning, right?
Well, even in-house, we give each other up, saying, oh, this is a good spot, and we find things wrong with it. I don't know, that's like I told Eli, that's the million dollar question, I just don't know where. I don't know where we can do that. And I don't want it to look like Alamosa, she mentioned, you know. We want it to look like someplace, yeah, I'll go use that, not like a shabby building, just to speak.
And you also like, it's something we said you want to be near the resources.
Right.
That's not, that's not the city units, that's the pool something. What size unit would you guys want to have for beginners, just to get, get the party started?
Point number?
Oh, how many? So they started with ten, is what Alamosa, the structural adds.
And then campsites, they had some campsites too where they can, where whoever provided the tent and then a place where they can camp too.
And then shower and more.
Yeah, the shower and the outfit facilities, it's a place to laundry.
Obviously, this is a terrible problem, a countrywide tough problem. Really tough problem for people that are involved in homelessness. So I do think we have a responsibility to try and help those people. It's also, as Councilwoman Grego said, it's also helping our constituents that are living in the town. I mean, you know, it's giving them the ability to use the park like it's intended to in other spaces too. In doing so, or helping the homeless, you would hope every area helps their homeless, but it doesn't seem to work out that way. I mean, you have people that are transient, people are literally transferred to other places. So I was wondering, do you have, does anyone have any idea? Like, I think Alamosa would be ideal because, you know, they're geographically separate from other towns, whereas Denver, it's really hard to determine. But has Alamosa seen an influx of people being, you know, relocated to their area because they have that homeless assistance program? Do you know?
I think they have. I think that not only do they have that issue, people relocating there because of the facility, but they also have a lot of migrant workers that they deal with in Alamosa. So I think it's a hard, a hard way to put a number on what they have going on because of those variables that we don't necessarily have here.
Yeah. Two more points I had to make there. So in accounting for, say, the public cost of individuals being homeless, you mentioned that, what was it, million dollar or a thing? You know, I understand that we have a police department, a fire department. Those are incurred costs to taxpayers, but it's hard to actually track, you know, X percent of a payroll is going to deal with that issue. So let's say we could magically fix the problem overnight, some expenditure of dollars. It's really hard to say you're actually going to see a realization of a cost reduction. You know, I mean, is it hard to say, or can we prove that?
So one thing that the National Alliance on Homelessness completed in Denver in 2013, I believe, was an estimated cost per stadium per year, which was fifteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars per homeless person associated with medical service, temporary shelter, costs associated with arrest and incarceration. So that was from Denver.
And you do have that information?
Yes.
Okay, that, yeah, that'd be good. The last question that I had is, you know, again, if we could magically set this up overnight, and we've all related to it, and I think you somewhat addressed it yourself, I think it would be super important. You know, there's that expression, you can lead a horse to water and a cat can't make you drink. I get that, people have to have personal buy-in. But I think it would be incredibly important to try partnering with private groups, you know, publicly funded groups, anywhere that can lend a hand to try and ensure we're giving these individuals not only the ability, but the encouragement to re-enter society. I think that's maybe super important to accomplish. One last super quick point. I think it's important when we do this that we establish it in a year-round, ongoing basis. Otherwise, we nullify the reason of doing it. And that referring back to the camping ordinance, because I mean, if it's good this month or that month, but not following months, then we're being halfway effective. That's my input at this point.
Thank you.
And everybody, the same impression, my thought is that, you know, establishing a coalition to help these people, when it sounds like this Pastor Clay is kind of a point person that has been pretty well, has worked with them really well. And I think if he can be part of this, but yet at the same time, keep the religious aspect out of that so that we don't, they don't get into trouble, we don't get into trouble with it. But it sounds like he might be able to get some good answers to what these people are actually wanting and needing. The problem that we have with where to place it is that, right now, if you look at the perimeter of Trinidad, we're landlocked. We don't really have very much open space. And somebody just gave me a note a minute ago, is to ask, in Alamosa, how far out from the shelter? Is it at the edge of town, is it in town?
Two point three miles, right next to their municipal airport.
Okay. Here's a thought that I just, now that we're having this discussion. I think an ideal place, but we would have to engage with the county at the other side of the Roundup Park. That space on the backside. It's not that far out, but it's a pretty wide open space. But then again, we would have to get some buy-in from the county to see, and then first being able to provide them with water, electricity. I think we extend water out to the fairgrounds already, so it wouldn't be that hard as far as any kind of porta potties, that type of facility, bath facilities, that can all be done. But so I think that, being that we're landlocked, we don't have much choice. And that could be, that's the only place that I could think of right offhand. And that could be, that's the only place that I could think of right offhand. Because I think anything else, any place that we go with this, it's primary for development for other purposes. So I think that that is one area that, I don't know, what was that? I'm not sure if that's county property or whose property. So we would have to check with the county to see what, if they, is it by the property?
Right there in the square, because you're talking about on the other side?
Yeah, right on the other side.
Yeah. Yeah, some gas, some trailer there, that's what they want that way.
And going way back, we had that discussion, this has been an ongoing thing for several years now. It's kind of like you build a delca. And I think that's the big fear that people have. And that is the fear of the discussion that we had is, like you said, Alamosa, you think that more people have come along because of the availability of the housing that they have. The other thing is to, you know, will they accept this type of living? That's the other question then. Sure, we can offer it, but will they accept that type of living? I saw this morning that, you know, these encampments that are going on, there is some pushback in Arizona whether it's actually legal to do this, from what I gather. I saw that just this morning on my phone. You might look into that. There's something going on in Arizona about, I'm not sure, some legal issues that have arisen for this type of encampment. So as a matter of fact, a while ago, I was trying to, I could populate it on my phone to see. Like, it'd be something to look into. Last year, I was at a meeting and this was discussed and there was, I think it was Centennial. What they did is they, kind of like we're planning on doing here, is getting the coalition of people together to try to work with homeless. But the thing that they did is they have the group, groups that go out and, or a group that goes out and they, they look at vets first, try to help the vets, that's the primary goal. The second one are to find those that really need the help and want the help. And then, of course, they have the ones that don't want help and they just leave them alone. And they've had some success with that, I guess, because as we know, the vets, there's a lot of homeless vets out there. So I think that would be something to look at. The mail is probably not an issue because wherever we find a place, we can always get the, you know, postal service to do the mail there. The other last thing is, I think, and we could ask Mike Beasley this. I fought to cover some bills, a couple of bills that went through this year or we're working on for homeless. If we were to establish an area to try and find, design a home or whatever little campsite, whatever you want to call it. But I think that there was something out there to help us fund this project. The big thing would be the after maintenance would be the factor that I think that City Council would be proud of with afterward. We need to be careful with that as well, because you're going to have to have the ongoing costs of maintaining them, the ongoing costs of porta-potties or facilities or building a shower facility, you know, whatever we have to do, just the ongoing. And like I said, I guess the biggest thing is we need to, because right now we have a camping ordinance within the city for our parks. So we would have to build that into that area, into that camping.
Yes.
That ordinance.
Yes. Ours is not a two-page campaign, ours is like a couple of sentences, but that's correct.
And I guess the biggest thing going down to it is cost. You know, figure it out, get the, put some, put the pencil in the paper and see what this thing is going to cost us.
Can you make a suggestion? What do you think about the idea of actually finding out who serves the homeless now, the nonprofits? Why don't we have a community meeting where you make a presentation and see if we can form a group of people that are really sincerely interested in doing something like that and we go forward?
I think you took the words out of my mouth.
That was the whole point of us coming today. Was to get some.
You're good.
You just threw us a sentence at us. The whole point, we met with Steve Enderer and gave a longer presentation of this and what direction we're trying to go. And he said, okay, let's get this in front of council. Now we're wanting to just start the dialogue. That's all we wanted to do today is start the dialogue, see who the actual players are going to be. We're not trying to be in charge of anything, we're just trying to take the lead and bring those members together. That's all we're trying to do. And then in the end, it's going to help me with enforcement of what I can and can't do.
I think with the, the next step would be to find a date that you can invite people and I would say those people that you have listed and send them an invite to say, you know, and we know you're interested in homeless, to help the homeless, would you please participate? And I think that's probably the next step, the next step. Any other questions?
Chandler, I ask you, what does Alamosa's policing policy protocol like right now?
In regards to?
Encampments, monitoring.
So they have their code enforcement officers that are required to go there twice a day during their shift. They also review surveillance footage. They had an issue of people dropping off items for the people who are staying in the encampment. So they, the code enforcement officers dealt with that aspect of it. So basically, it kind of falls on the code enforcement officers and then the coalition steps in to help with monthly cleanups, with transportation, any other necessity that somebody's staying there may need.
Thanks for the presentation before the next step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, Winter Fest presentation, Amanda Court.
Hi. I brought my own presentation, I applaud you. And while I'm getting set up, I want to introduce you all to four people who have, we've all been plenishing. Gillian Cheek, Gillian just moved here from Canyon City, has a very deep and wide background in event production. She does some outstanding stuff in Canyon City and she also has a very big background in rodeo. There's a teaser. She's going to be taking over the rodeo.
Start your last name.
Cheek C-H-E-K.
Constant.
Yep.
Do you have it all right?
No.
So yeah, she's going to be taking over the road. We're also going to be asking for a work session to talk about the rodeo. And then the illustrious Carlton Croft, he's the Economic Development Director for Orpino County.
I don't, the problem is getting on Zoom. Can you, is there any way you can email it to us or what?
Yeah, probably. Except it's got a video attached to it.
Okay.
It'll be very, really big. You don't need to send it to you?
Yeah, that's fine.
And then Marty, of course, Marty Hackett, has been very involved in this. She's been telling us things you should do and shouldn't do and how to make this really work well.
Sorry, we're working on meaning.
Yeah. Give us a sorry place with a G in it.
What's a G?
Yeah. Sorry, guys, I was just expecting I was going to be able to. Seeds this size. Can you go to Google Drive? You couldn't do it? Uh, it's too large. I think Stephen would get a jump chat.
Just now I got some. Right, very good. I'm just looking out for us.
Who the heck could use such a job?
I might have to pledge this.
Yeah.
I'm just looking out for us.
Okay, well, let me go ahead and go through it and then you can catch up when we get the slides up. So we're planning on a winter fest. We're calling it the, oh, well, first, Carlton, can you explain how this all came about?
So this all started with one of our commissioners in Orpino County, Erica Andrea. She had talked to local businesses, especially in La Vida. And they were having a real fourth quarter and the first quarter has not been very good at all. We experienced, we have great summers and we have pretty good shoulder seasons, but come the winter, it just shuts down. And one of the things that we've been working on in Orpino County is to try and get businesses to have a way to stay open year-round and become more of a destination, location year-round. So the idea came up, why don't we see about having a winter festival? You know, you've got Monument Lake, a great resource, we've got the Charrar Mountain Park. And we had some examples of successfully doing winter festivals like the Rio Frio over in Alamosa. In fact, we're using, we contacted the company that does those wonderful giant ice sculptures, sculptures. And so we got rolling and Amanda and I have been talking about ideas because she's such a go-getter and wanted to talk to about doing events and things like that. And she said, well, why don't we get the two counties to work together and put together a winter fest? And the idea again is to help local business, bring more people here to discover southeast Colorado. And so with them, I think we're ready.
Yeah, yes, we are. So one of the great things about our community is we have the scenic highway of legends, which was named America's scenic highway in 2019, I believe. All kinds of amazing, we have always been the gateway for visitors who come to Colorado, right, to go skiing, et cetera, from all the adjacent states. So if we provide a festival in our region that highlights the wonderful views that we see on the scenic highway of legends, we think that's a win-win. We also think it's a win-win to collaborate with another county on this. I don't think we've ever done that before and that would be really great to see, it would bring power to both areas. So scenic highway of legends, I'm not going to tell you anything new. The purpose of this event is to help promote the area, assure the sustainability of local businesses, engage visitors in the cultural and heritage aspects of the region, enhance the quality of life for everybody. We're going to do ice sculptures, winter games, parties, theater, art and concerts, just some of the fun activities that look on tap and ideas for this. Why would they come here? Think about all the scenes that we have. We have volcanic formations along the scenic highway of legends that there is nothing like it, except on the other side of the earth. We also have, if you look at all of our history, we were the home for the Ute and Comanche, American Indian tribes who referred to the peaks as the breasts of the earth, right? All of those different things, the Ludlow massacre, we have all kinds of history with Kipson Carson, Bat Masterson, all the stuff that we know. I would love to amplify that in a winter festival, gives people another reason to come here. And as I've heard from the tour board before, one of the number one reasons that people visit in areas because of the history, right? And we've got that in spades. So we created a video here and I doubt the audio will come out, but Gillian put this together. So you asked, how come there weren't more images of snow-capped mountains? Because every time we sent a drone team out to do it, it was way too windy. So we will redo this when a lot of the snow comes back, okay? And as you saw, we want to focus this between show. We want to focus this in the area between La Vida and Monument Lake, that's a 28-mile stretch. It's going to be hard to kind of create enough events to get people going from area to area. The two largest, La Vida and Monument Lake, will have the lion's share of the larger events, but we like to get participation from all the communities along that way for all sorts of different events. And I can go into a list a little bit later. So the schedule would be February 2nd through the 4th. And we have the times right there. On the 2nd, we want to do local kickoffs with events in Walsenburg, La Vida and Trinidad. Just a lot for the locals, celebrating, this is the winter fest we're going to have.
Have you talked with the operator of Monument Lake? I know there's some limitations because of winter closures and all that stuff, but he may be able to have some idea of some type of accommodations.
Yep. Yep, he's been involved also on the conference calls or the Zooms that we've been having about it. We're planning on doing the ice fishing demonstration there at Monument Lake. So these are some of the activities and kind of the schedule that we have. Winter sports and activities, ice fishing, snow sculpting, snow shoeing, kids' games, contests, drawings, music, dance and beer circles, which I had never heard of before. Also, some of the events, we borrowed from different events we've been in other areas. How many people have been to the Frozen Dead Guy Festival?
Netherlands.
In Netherlands and now it's going to be in Estes Park. Yeah, not in Netherlands anymore. They have something called a frozen T-shirt contest. Instead of wet T-shirt, it's frozen T-shirt. They take a T-shirt, they fold it, they wet it, they freeze it. And then they have a contest for who can unfold it and put it on without tearing it apart. So little things like that. Or they have Rob the Snowbank, so they have a large pile of snow that vendors put in gift cards or money or snacks or whatever and release the kids on it and they dig through it and they get prizes that way. Or there's also, we talked about doing in Coachara Valley, doing the Nordic race, so race on the snowshoes. The date that we picked, February 2nd through the 4th, is the weekend after Breckenridge does their big snow sculpting festival. And then Alamosa does their Rio Frio. So we think we can tag on to that. It gives people another reason to come down to this area of the state during the cold.
That's not certainly the fourth Sunday, is it?
No, I think that's the second Sunday, isn't it? Good question. Can you Google it?
Yeah.
A good call.
Crystal Creek has their ice sculpture festival on the first or second of February.
It's generally the second.
Yeah, because I've been to it.
Yeah. But that's kind of an idea of the schedule. Obviously, since February, we've got to stop, maybe move around, see how everything shakes up. But that's what we're planning on right now.
Super Bowl's February 11th.
There you go.
Good question.
We do have, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We do have a comprehensive media plans, marketing. We asked Camille from Adapro to put it together, so we've already got that. Yeah, we're going to be meeting with her next week because we want the $10,000 Trinidad tourism grant. Yay. And we do have $11,000 from Orpino County. Yay. So we're good starting out on $21,000. Our budget, we think it's going to be about $80,000. That'll cover everything, including the bands, the music, security, supplies, rentals, ice, et cetera.
Well, I'm not sure if this would be something you might check into. The Barnai Ranch owns the Whiskey Creek area.
Okay.
And I don't know if they would allow anybody to go up that canyon. You can talk to the ranch manager.
Who is it? I know I've been there. I'm sure you have contacted.
Would be worthwhile just asking. Because they've always been very community informed here, so they might.
And there is a sponsorship program that she'll go into, talking about the different individuals and entities that will be asking for sponsorship, so they are on our list. So they are on our list.
Good.
Uh, and we do have a list of sponsors. We compiled a list of about 26 different larger sponsors. We're talking about sponsorships anyway, $25,000 to the lowest about 100 or 150. Uh, we are leveraging, we're partnering with Rural Journal, because they already sell a whole lot of ads in the whole area, right? So they have those contacts. And it's just the four of us. So we are looking at them as our extended arm to be able to sell, uh, sponsorships there. Uh, and here we go. This collaboration between county marketing partners, which I just set together a few months ago. And Coyote Ridge is Jillian's, City of Trinidad, Orphanoe County, Rural Journal. So, one of the reasons that we wanted to talk to y'all about this is we are just four people. And as a small community, we have the agility to be able to get everybody in on this, right? All the small businesses, everyone in the community can become part of this. We'd love to, um, present in front of our, communicate with the, the different art organizations here. Um, to maybe do a contest or do a show around the Spanish Peaks right around that time. Because people who've come to the winter fest are gonna go, oh, this is so awesome. I need to get a piece of art to commemorate this. We want to send them to Trinidad or send them to Walsenburg to look there. Um, I know there's a plein air society in Colorado. I'd love to get them to come down here. Or if there are some here, they can be doing on the side of the road, maybe. Yep, it's not too cold. It's not too cold, that would be torture. Um, theater, Allison and I have already been talking about, we can do a progressive theater thing between each of the small towns. That would give people another reason to go to the new community. Let's see this installment of this theater act, you know, at the same time, there may be an ice fishing demonstration going on. It's just something progressive to get people going from place to place. Restaurants, food trucks, brewery, um, Mountain Merman Brewery up in La Vida is gonna be part of this. They're terrific. Uh, and then merchants and maps. So I know there's somebody in town, Jay Gillespie, right? Who does maps and we are gonna talk to him about doing the map for this, uh, winter fest. Oh, there we go. Yeah, I got the schedule works, I didn't want to make a mistake. I presented this several times. So these are different sponsorship levels. Um, do you want to add anything into this? Do you want to go through those? Because Carlton and Jillian helped design these sponsorship levels.
Um, it's just, the main sponsors being, obviously, having the most extravagant, what they would be, get from it. Um, they would get all the advertising, the VIP tickets for all of their concerts that we're gonna hold on. Um, multiple advertising in various locations, social media, on-air, print marketing, all that inclusive. And then, uh, vendor booths, because we want to have the businesses in the area to be able to be represented up there if they want. So we're giving everybody that sponsors a free, um, vendor booth at the La Vida area or up at Monument Lake to where they can set up a business display or have their business represented by them there. Um, and then as it goes down, it just goes down from event partner, title sponsor. And it just kind of breaks down and obviously the lower it goes, the little bit less each sponsor gets.
Does Orphanoe County or Walsenburg and La Vida, do they have their own tourism, uh, do they have tourism boards there?
Yes, in fact, you forgot to mention, I'm also the tourism director. The other thing I want to add just real quick is the, the big centerpiece of this whole festival is a big country concert at Monument Lake on Saturday night. Uh, where we're looking to bring in a nationally-known band. I like bringing Sleep at the Wheel, but I'm old and I hear that there's a lot of, uh, other accents, Sleep at the Wheel, but, uh, anyway.
There's a lot of them. I'm one Hazel Miller.
But anyway, uh, yeah, we do have a tourism.
Well, I think a collaboration between our tourism and other tourism boards up there would be essential. Uh, and, you know, right now, we're changing the way that we're doing our, possibly doing our marketing going forward. So it would be, maybe a bit different, but it would still, it would have to be better.
And so that's the, all the way to the smallest sponsorships. And some of the example activities, the ice fishing, York Race, frozen t-shirt contest, shovel races, robbing the snowbank, ice axe throwing contest, polar plunge, ice or snow sculpting locations. And another thing, we, when, part of the sponsorship, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna ask you, are you gonna have like a mini X Games like they have in Aspen?
Sure. That, that comes with a whole other insurance and liability.
Well, I was just asking.
We want to ask the organization.
There's a lot of snowboarders around here. Lots of snowboarders around here.
Well, we're hoping that by next February, that the mountain park will have the lift, lift three working. And, uh, so that there'll already be, uh, some skiers. I mean, they've, they've been skiing this last year. They've been using a snowcat.
Right.
Trailer behind it, taking people up the top. But, uh, we're hoping it's gonna be a little bit better shape. And then you add in, uh, all the different family events you can get up at the mountain park. And figure doing them during the day and then getting the crowds moved to Monument Lake in the evening for the concert.
You know, when I was a, when I was a kid, there was a place there at Monument Lake where we used to go tobogganing rivers. And they used to collect the tobogganing stuff. Something we had as a kid. Uh, would be an ideal thing to do, is that there's a little hail smoke that they can toboggan and sled whatever.
Absolutely. And we want, uh, the large corporations or large companies to be running the sponsorships, but then the nonprofits to actually be facilitating. So maybe, you know, fill in, when everybody thinks about, right, they're sponsoring one area of it, maybe it's the shovel races. But maybe it's ADC disabilities that is passing out the shovels and, you know, they got their teachers. And it's opportunity for them to promote their nonprofit.
No, that was, that was my first sled, was a snow shovel. I mean, with a, 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 a mine shovel that my dad gave us. He still loves it. But that would be kind of cool.
Yeah.
Mine shovel races.
It's kind of a detail, but, um, uh, I was in Berlin in December and it was freezing cold. But they have winter markets in Berlin and they're very fun. They have, you know, place, heating spots and things like that, maybe just for us. We're only, one thing they do is that the winter markets have their own mugs. And you get your glue vine in your mug and you pay $3 or 3 euros to basically rent it. And if you don't turn it in, you just, you lost your $3. But it's a, a built-in souvenir that could be printed with a logo. So everywhere they go those two days, they can bring that mug with them and get it filled.
Maybe get a discount on your beer.
Yeah, well, yeah, but our warm drinks probably are gonna want a coffee and
Yeah.
a bottle of wine and whatever. But it was, I, I remember being there going, why don't we do something like this? Because it's fun to get out at night in the wintertime and, and to go see, I think people were selling wool clothes. And you're like, that looks good. Pretty good, you know? Um, but it was, it's a really creative idea. I'm glad you've come up with it and thanks you two for being involved. We need party as well. Awesome. Any questions? And you're like, talk to these guys. They're all about us.
I think it's a great, great idea. And the separate reason that you were saying is that we've been struggling. How do we attract people to agree with us? That's the.
Just talk them into getting off the highway on the way to Breckenridge or whatever. Add an extra couple of days in your trip.
That'd be nice. And on the first year, maybe a little slow, but I think if you go, uh, later on, yeah.
That's why it's the first annual. Why'd it come up with a weird name like Frozen Dead Guy?
Yeah.
I don't know where you would, um, have, uh, the land do this or not, uh, any public land allow for it. But, I mean, if you, um, found some way to have some sort of snowmobile race or anything like that. I mean, those people spend a lot of money and added, um, it'd just be another element to add into there. I mean, you know, Tony Parity, so it might be, you know, something like that. Just, just be another element to add.
Like a ranch rodeo.
There was another, uh, snow up going down Potato Bench.
Oh, yeah.
Get some sled doggies.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be very cool.
Actually, that's a big thing up, uh, northern Colorado.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
There's, there's snow.
Pass on the ideas. Pass on what else we can see.
Great presentation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Really thank you for really thinking about this and take on.
Highway of Legends.
Thank you very much.
We have to have all this there.
Right, that's right. Any other questions for them? No, okay.
Thank you all.
Yeah, I disagree. Uh, Eckhart Elementary School site plan, Neil Paul.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having me here. Appreciate seeing everybody. St. Vincent Council Mayor. Um, if I could give a brief, uh, some of you, it's my recall, some, uh, I came to Neil Paul, first of all. I am the current owner of Eckhart Elementary School. What brought me here in 2017 was hearing that Temple Aaron was for sale. Uh, if you're not aware, you know, the synagogue here in town is the second oldest continuously operated synagogue west of the Mississippi River. Um, it is a, a Rapp Brothers architecturally-designed building that's one of, you know, 80 buildings here in town. Uh, if you haven't seen the recent U Legends magazine, there's a good article about the Rapp Brothers and about buildings. Amazingly, the temple's on the front, but regardless, that's what brought me here. Uh, there's been a lot happening. Again, back then, it was for sale. Today, it's slated to be the next national historic landmark. Um, which is really significant. I was, uh, I've been asked by a few people, isn't it already a historic, uh, landmark? And it has, it was added to the National Historic Registry back in 1973, if I'm not mistaken. In Colorado, there were 1,500 buildings on the National Historic Registry. But there are only 26 properties, sites, buildings and sites, including Betts Fort, Chautauqua Park, Air Force Academy, Cadet Center, the National Historic Landmarks. So Temple Aaron will be the 27th in the state. Um, just so happens that this year, on July 23rd, will be the 140th anniversary when the first 17 people got together to form congregation Temple Aaron back in 1883. So we have an event, a party, uh, planned for, uh, the 140th anniversary of the con, forming of the congregation. And we're hoping by then, the Department of, uh, uh, the Department of Interior will give us a, the final approval and will receive the plaque for the National Historic Landmark. So hopefully that'll be a, a big celebration. We have the governor invited and a lot of people, and you're all invited. We'll give you more information as we get closer to that date. Uh, again, it's the weekend, July 23rd, 20, uh, 22nd, 23rd. Um, to give you an update about Eckhart, last time I was here, I was about to buy it, I think it was September of last year. I, I was really fortunate, blessed, whatever, to be able to close on it last September, September 30th. Uh, now I am the owner and, you know, as you're probably aware, the Head Start is the tenant there. And, and I think they're doing a great job as a property owner. I just can't tell you, you know, can't think of a, a great partnership there. The staff there, it looks like the kids are very well taken care of administratively. They're, everything is working very well. However, the entire building is 28,000 square feet. Head Start's using 14,000. We have an additional 14,000 square foot available. And when I purchased it, uh, I, my own feelings, I think, was tragic. The school district had to lose the building, was forced to sell it. It's happening all around the country. I won't get any further into that. It's unfortunate. However, I feel very privileged to own the property now. And, uh, but I think it was built for the school and it should be kept that way to help support the children. Um, likewise, I think Temple Aaron was built as a synagogue, you know, it would be kept that way. So you just need a little help to make it happen. So, uh, I guess I just should let you know, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity with four acres of land that could be turned into. But I really want to keep it for the youth. And I do not live here, um, as you know, so I'm asking for whatever support I can get from, um, from the city, from any, from county, from anyone, and to help put together some sort of a plan to, at one point that school, from what I understand, housed 250 children, supported 250 children. And I'd love to see, you know, 150, 250 kids have that as a, a point of education for their early lives. Um, you know, we had the presentation about homelessness, I wouldn't be on a fan of that, but obviously, I think, help the kids today, they'll be in better shape for the future. And, uh, there's an opportunity. I'm, I'm really want to work with the city and local area to, uh, do, we can, put kids back in there. So I've had, um, you know, I've thought in my mind, owning it, you know, what, what best use of the other space. Thought about Montessori, we had a brief conversation about possibly creating a Montessori here in town. Um, I don't know if that's the answer. Uh, I had a, uh, just over the weekend, I had a, a brief, a meeting with ABC Development. Uh, people that are doing that, young couples doing that, young family. And, you know, that could be an answer. Um, I just think that whether, whether we could look at Eckhart, the former Eckhart Elementary School as a future youth academic center or development center or training center or some sort of educational center. I think it would really benefit the community, uh, in long term, short term as well. Um, I, as property owner, would love to incorporate agricultural components to the property. Um, I'd love to, I, there's ground there, I'd love to build a large greenhouse. Um, and that gnarly hillside along Washington Street and the other side of the building, I'd love to change that into, you know, a fruit orchard. And irrigate the hill, you know, drip irrigation, whatever, and put, I don't know how many trees could fit there, but, you know, 200 fruit trees, all of those. You know, a lot of kids and their families can get benefit in the future. And I may never get a bite out of fruit, but hopefully many other people will. Um, so, I'm kind of here with, um, any ideas. And, and to, to the food part, if I can get the right tenant, it doesn't have to be a perfect tenant. If I get the right tenant, that Head Start seems to be interested in the agricultural element. Those children too small to do that. But if there are maybe other children within using that property that might be able to maintain and operate and learn from that facility. I'm willing to help provide the facility, but I can't manage it. I can't take care of it. I can't administer people here. But I'm hoping that it would be large enough to not only feed, create healthy daily fresh food for the children and their immediate family and the staff and their family, the local family. But hopefully, the building could be large enough that maybe more than 50% of the output will go back to the city. Homeless, those in need, low income, whoever in the city wants to divvy out the food. I'd just like to see it work. So, anyway, I'd love to, any suggestions?
Sir, have you networked with the executive director, Patrick Walsh, from the, uh, future camps, is it funding programs?
I don't know if they have the funding to be able to, um, if, if someone can help, help them get the funding. I, I think, based on where they're at now currently, and I'm not discounting anything. I think that Eckhart would give them a lot more opportunity for growth. Uh, if there's a gymnasium there, there's, you know,
Other facilities.
You know, if you do the greenhouse and orchard, there'll be that there. I mean, those, those could really benefit by being on, at that location. I realize the city is providing, still at the location they were last year. And I don't want to get involved with politics, because I know that sometimes, you know, things happen for, things always happen for a reason. But, um, they would be a, a great candidate, but it, I think it comes down to budgets.
Any other, any other thoughts?
I just want, sure. What, uh, I can't remember the group that they're building, the garden over here, family?
Garden all that away here.
Elm Street?
Yeah.
Joni? Yeah. Well, they may be interested in, in some of that land up there to expand the gardening for their use too. Because you do have water and everything up there.
Right.
So you might talk to them.
I spoke with Joni. She's actually, I believe, part of the music club. Uh, so she, she knows it and she's interested in the things that, you know, I need to get the proverbial horse. So she, she knows of it, and she's interested in the thing that, you know, I need to get the proverbial horse before the garden. So I need a tenant in place that I know will maintain it and use it and want it before we create the garden. So, you know, if we can get the right, you know, youth facility that feels that there's a value in creating that, then I'm more than happy to create it. So, but Jody's definitely, I mean, I don't have the resources, finances, just create it down, hope that they will come. If they're, if they're there, if they're using the property and want that facility, I'm more than, you know, do what I can to put that together. I think, Aaron, you mentioned your brother, works at the high school.
Yes, sir.
Is involved in agriculture. Guys, I'm open. I mean, I left my card there, some phone number, if you have any idea, I'd love to have a task, you know, working. A kind of ongoing conversation. What we can do.
I met a woman recently at the Women of Los Angeles County meeting, and she's very interested in starting a business that would provide an indoor play space for children, because there's nothing like that in Trinidad. And I gave her your card when I met her, because she said, well, you know, he might be interested in that being a space. I don't know if she's contacted you.
I believe she had, I don't remember where she, Texas?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
We did speak, unfortunately, she can't use, you know...
All of it.
Yeah, she kind of needs a little bit of space, and if I give up a little, I might lose out on being able to get someone to utilize a larger area, so I, I don't want to rule it out. And like the conversations we had Saturday morning with ABC is that maybe if there's an ABC or some other group that's willing to administer the usages within the building, possibly having a group like that, having them as part of it, having, you know, one or two classes of developmental, developmental training. Yeah, it could be divvied out like that, but...
I think that's probably what you're going to have to do, is start with some small ideas that then expand them, because I, there's nothing that comes to mind, but I don't have my finger on the pulse of what's happening with the children at Trinidad as well as I'd like, so I, that's the best I can come up with now. It would be helpful if I could tour it with you someday, so I could even see it, because I don't even know what I'm...
You know, honestly, I, thanks for opening that door. I, if the City Council ever does off-site, like field trips, whatever, I would love to have you guys, you know, open the doors, walk you, you'll see what Head Start is doing now, you'll see what's available for the rest of the community. If you want to add a quick visit to Temple Aaron, we can do that as well. Proud to carry the keys for both places, so whatever I can do, you know, I think. You say you lose opportunity to help make this something that's worthwhile for the long term for the community.
Have you talked to the Department of Agriculture in town to see if there's any groups that might be interested, like maybe the farmers, ranchers?
What about that, they run the mountain, what is it?
That's the one that he was talking about.
Jody, Jody Steiner, I think, the mountain farm or whatever? I haven't even been there yet, I really want to go there.
Talk, then maybe there's, you know, there's probably been some talk about utilizing the local agriculture to provide anything for the community. And I don't know if they'd have anything, anybody that had been interested there or not.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that.
The one person that was very interested in doing that was Tony Haas. He's a county commissioner.
Okay.
Oh, I did speak with Tony. And at one time, he was interested in actually trying to do something with grass-fed beef. But that's not, not enough for the beef.
I wouldn't talk about that, though.
He might not be right on the hill.
You know, you might talk to the Department of Eckhart, just see if there are any groups out there.
Thank you.
I was going to say, just quickly, it seems to me you're competing for a real limited resource in town, and that's, you know, kids that would attend that sort of space. But have you, have you at all spoken to Jennifer Oliver, Council of Governors? She has a pretty, and I can get that contact to you.
Please.
But, I mean, you know, they have good connections with a lot of preschool groups for that sort of thing.
I don't know that I have.
I'll get that contact.
Okay, thank you.
Right after this.
Appreciate that, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, on to, I have a former lodging tax advisory board interviews, and for your, Mr. Downs asked if maybe he could be excused for dispositions.
Please, please.
Excuse, please.
Thank you. I hate to abandon all...
I think we have a vote. Abandonment.
Yeah, I know, that's right. Sorry.
Okay, the purpose of this is to do interviews for those people that have a cry for the new lodging tax advisory board. So, and anything else that you want to reject right now?
Mr. Mayor, no, this is the interview process, and then we hope to have you all go down on appointments and actually tell some things.
Well, let's go ahead and get started. Dawn Richardson, I'm not sure if she's here.
And thank you for everyone for playing along with us. Yeah, I appreciate that. Let's devotion, will they?
Hi, thank you guys for having me. Are you, am I starting, or are you asking questions?
No, you, you go ahead, do your meditation.
So I'm, oh, I have some stuff here. This is just a little bit of my background, but my name is Dawn Richardson. I'm a parent, school age children in Trinidad, and I moved here for recreation, culture, and community. I've been on the tourism board for a year, a little over a year now, although the last few months are a little bit precarious, right? It took me a year, I think, being on the board to really understand what the board does, and what we need as a community, and where we can be more efficient and make improvements that will really benefit our community in terms of how we promote and advertise. I think tourism is a huge generator of economic opportunity, and also for creating sustainable jobs that possibly our children can stay here instead of leave and have opportunities. So I have a lot of experience in the tourism world, from teaching skiing a million years ago, guiding backpack trips. I own a distillery, and I used to have a tasting room in Summit County, near Brackenridge, with a restaurant and a bar. I still have a bar in Denver. I work with the Colorado Department of, or with the Denver, Visit Denver Tourism Board there. And we work, we do a lot of stuff with conventions and whatnot in that region. And then I currently own the Trinidad Kayak Company, and I rent kayaks at the Trinidad Lake State Park. It's a business that I started last summer, and hopefully, will be up and running in a couple more weeks for this season. So I also have worked on the Colorado Department of Tourism Destination Development. I wrote a big grant for the Colorado Distillers Guild, and I created a statewide tourism initiative called the Colorado Spirits Trail. To, so Kentucky, for example, grosses over a billion dollars from their bourbon trail, and I called up our Distillers Guild president, and I said, why don't we have a trail? We have more distilleries, and Colorado is a way cooler place to visit than Kentucky. Hopefully, that doesn't affect you. And he said, well, we've tried, but nobody's been able to get it off the ground. Well, I wrote a grant, I brought together leaders of our industry. We're competitors, but we're willing to work together on this initiative, and I created a statewide tourism initiative called the Colorado Spirits Trail, and it's still up and running. I started that in twenty eighteen, twenty twenty took a little bit of a plateau, but it's been resurrected and running strong. I got grants, money from the Colorado Department of Tourism to do that, and I spoke at the Governor's Conference on how to generate tourism in rural communities based on an industry. I also currently sit on the Colorado Department of Education Inclusivity and Travel Coalition. It's an organization that was created by Governor Polis to really work on how to bring more people in diverse areas to Colorado, and also really celebrate our diversity of the state, which I think speaks very well to Trinidad in particular. So I've also written, done a lot of PR, done a lot of free media for both the Spirits Trail and for my own distillery by going to events and just hustling, to be honest. So those are, that's kind of my background. My vision is, I would really love to professionalize the Colorado Tourism Board, or the Trinidad Tourism Board, sorry. You know, I feel like we really need to become a world-class destination, and in order to do that, we, it's time for us to stop being a do-it-yourself organization and hire some professionals. We need a marketing firm to really be able to execute the quality and consistency of a message and to develop a message. We have a billboard up on I-25 that says Trinidad. It doesn't say, "Come eat, drink, and play on historic Main Street." It doesn't tell anybody what we have, it's just basically a road sign that says the name of our town. And that's not okay, right? We should be using it as an opportunity to drive people off of the exit and come and spend money in our businesses and visit our beautiful town, right? And by hiring, I think, professionals, we can do that. We can get consistent messaging across all of our media that we're sending out, either paid advertisement or whatever. We also need to bring ourselves into the twenty-first century and really increase our digital platform. You know, we should have really strong Google Ads, especially when the traffic is really strong coming through here. Spring break, I was at Exit Eleven eating dinner at Tequila's, it was packed. Main Street was dead, right? With a good Google campaign, we can get those people driving past Exit Eleven and getting off on Main Street and visiting our businesses, and we need to be doing that. We need to be cognizant that we are part of a larger tourism ebb and flow around the state. The ski industry, fishing, things like that, even though they don't ski here, that still impacts our tourism, and we need to be taking a look at that. We also need measurables on every single piece of advertisement that we put out there. For example, we put an ad in the Bronco, like Season Ticket Holder, Circular, or whatever it is. Costs us about six thousand dollars. Last year, we advertised the golf course. We didn't have a QR code on there, or a specialized phone number, or anything that would, that people could call, so we could measure how much energy or momentum that ad was giving us. So we don't know if we just threw six thousand dollars at a wall and nobody ever actually paid, or if it was effective. We need to be able to have some measurable component to all of the advertising that we do, right? So that's basically what I, why I would like to continue serving on the tourism board. You know, it took me a while to figure out what we needed, and now I feel like there's momentum, and I'm ready to continue.
Questions, any questions for her?
Dawn, if you are appointed to this board, how well will you agree to disagree with other board members?
I mean, I think we all have to agree to disagree, you know? I feel like if we, I mean, I'm going to lobby for what I believe is right, don't get me wrong, but I also feel like you could do that in a respectful and thoughtful way. If you continue, if you can talk about the issue at hand. You shouldn't talk about individuals or whatnot, that's not appropriate. But whenever you're sitting in a governing body, you have to be able to disagree on policy, discuss policy, debate policy, and at some point, you vote on it, and sometimes you win, and sometimes you lose, right?
I have no question.
You've answered a lot of the questions that I had from Eric to ask you, and that was helpful. I wondered, I'd like for us, the city, to benefit too from your experience in higher service with the tourism board. What do you think was successful that happened in that board, and what do you think needed improvement?
I think everybody on that board is very, very well-intended. I think everybody on the board really cares about Trinidad and really wants to see Trinidad go forward. I think one of the things we're lacking is a vision. We don't have, we didn't have a shared vision, and I don't think the town really has a vision for tourism. And that's why I think we need to come together and really think about what is our vision. You know, personally, I would like to see us focus in the first, in the next couple of years on our creative industry and outdoor recreation. And then maybe year three to five, add more of the history and the architecture, because we also need some more tourism assets, like wayfinding signs, plaques that tell you about the history in town. It's hard to market that when you're walking around and you don't see what's there, because we just don't have that infrastructure, right? So some of those things come together, but really be really strategic about it. Or if the marketing firm does the research and says, you know what, people are primarily coming here for, you know, our events, then maybe we lean into those events. We need to base it on the data, and then, you know, focus year over year, like a five-year plan. We're going to spend a lot of our money here, then we're going to slowly add more to other areas. Thank you.
Dawn, it seems like you have a lot on your plate, though. How would you manage the part of another board?
Well, this isn't another board, I've been on this board, so I don't think it's a lot on my plate necessarily. I mean, I'm a busy person, but I don't know what to do if I'm not busy, so that's what I do, you know? I think busy people get things done. You know, they always say, if you want to get something done, ask somebody who's busy.
I think this is more of a question for Mr. Ruger, and hopefully, in, to maybe, a streamlining of this discussion. You know, we were mentioning a strategic vision for Trinidad and tourism, and I think that's vital for us. But we're, we're preparing to send out a strategic vision, our strategic plan. It's my understanding, if we choose to adopt that, that that really is going to provide the nuts and bolts of the plan in which direction we're heading, and then the tax advisory board is going to be the people that are primarily responsible for implementing those suggestions that we'll authorize, is that correct?
This is Mayor Councilmember Williamson, that is correct. So a big part of our strategic planning process is to do community-wide visioning as well. And certainly, you know, it'd be appropriate for the lodging tax advisory board to be involved in that process as we develop that, but then certainly, to your point, implementing it is where we're really going to look to them for assistance.
And Dawn, I appreciated the questions Councilman Ogletree asked, and your answers. Something that you mentioned, and I couldn't agree more, you know, it's things that we really need to make sure we're taking advantage of. One point would be that billboard, I mean, we need to have really catchy attention-grabbing and specifically driving people to appoint about something, I appreciate it. But I have no specific questions for you other than what you've answered or have been presented otherwise, so thank you.
Question that I had is, you know, Richard DeGong asked a very ideal question, is working with other members of the board, and that to me is, there's nothing wrong with stating your ideas, what you, how you feel about your own policy. The big thing, and even within ourselves, we've got to be very careful that we don't be abusive to anybody else, talk over anybody else. Those are the type of things that if you're going to get these things done, you need to be able to work together and be cohesive about that, and that is really, really important if you're going to have a good board. Any board has to work that way. Explain to me, I do know that there was a retreat that you guys had, from my understanding, it did not go well. What was the reason for that?
I think part of it was there were some communication issues. We got the agenda for the retreat the day before, pretty late in the evening, about 4:00 PM the day before the retreat. The retreat was at 8:00 AM the next morning. Some people who had been, who had applied to be on the tourism board were invited to that retreat, and some were not. And I felt like, and also somebody who had applied to be on the tourism board was facilitating that retreat, and I felt that that was not appropriate in that setting. I felt like we needed to be transparent and really be clear about what our purposes were. Either you invite everyone and you give them the respectful amount of time they need to clear their calendars and be there and be present, or you invite no one. And I also don't think we ever defined what a retreat was. I think the board felt like we were going to have a retreat with just us and maybe Steve Ruger, or, you know, a couple of people, but a lot of members of the city were also there, and there was some confusion. And so I think we didn't, it wasn't clear what the objectives of that retreat were and who should be in... and who should be invited and those kinds of things. So we postponed it. But then at that point, the rest of the board, you guys voted on the other things.
Can you, you mentioned that, let me ask you this, who should have been at that retreat?
Well, several people who had applied to be on the Tourism Board were invited specifically to come.
But who do you think should have been at that?
I think either, if you're going to invite some people who are applying to be on a board, you should invite everyone or no one. Because it's only fair, because in those meetings, you're having, and at that time, we were the ones setting, putting forward who should be on a board, right? And I felt like at the time, we needed to be transparent. And also, you're building relationships in that setting, and it creates a propriety if some people get to build that relationship and other people aren't allowed to. It also creates a very weird environment when some people are deliberately invited to participate and some people are excluded from that when you're trying to really be a transparent board. A lot of the city doesn't know what we do, and I feel like it was really, really important for us to be very clear about what that was about and who was invited or not.
One of the things that hopefully will change are the amount of funding that will be available starting in 2024 is we are going after an additional 3% revenue tax, and that's gonna increase the amount of funding availability. How do you feel like that will impact the Tourism Board?
You know, I think the way the Tourism Board is restructuring, we don't know quite yet how that's going to look. I think the city is really ready for a tourism department. I would really love to see somebody who's in charge of economic development and tourism lead a department. And then the Tourism Board hopefully is filled with entrepreneurs. And because entrepreneurs and a solid bureaucracy together can really push us into sort of new levels. As an entrepreneur, you see how the needs and the structures of the business and whatnot in a very different way than when you're working within the bureaucracy. But you have to have the bureaucracy, you have to have paid staff members. You can't rely specifically on volunteers to create content for a city. It's just not very professional to do that. So I'm hoping that additional revenue will create an opportunity for us to have a viable tourism department and that we can, hopefully, as on this board, you'll have a lot of entrepreneurs to really drive that conversation, and I think it'd be amazing.
One of the things that, you know, I know has been the biggest on to the Tourism Board is that, and I've always felt was not good, is that the marketing plan was 50 miles to market outside of the Trinidad area. When the changes now, I think, can be inclusive, so I think that will be good. So that would be something, I think, that... You mentioned something earlier that whenever you went up and you saw that activity out of town and nothing downtown.
Yeah.
And I think that could change, so... Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Chris Miller.
If I don't have a handout, I'm assuming you've got...
Yes, yes.
Mayor, council, staff. Trying not to repeat myself since I've been on the Tourism Board two or three times in the last couple of months, but I have a deep passion for marketing, tourism, promoting events. Used to be a bit disjockeying, and I've talked about that, you know, going way back. All of that has a tendency to be in the same category of talking to people, inviting people, convincing them to, you know, buy or visit or come see whatever you're doing. I enjoy doing that. I enjoy marketing, promoting. My resume will show you that that's pretty much what I've done, you know, most of my adult life, all of my adult life. I have had the honor of being appointed by this council, a few other different faces, but on the board almost 40 years ago. And I have watched it evolve. I heard things about, you know, from past members of stuff, don't get on and everything else, and I just tried to ignore that. I have my own ability to make opinions about people, what they're doing. And quite honestly, I'm very proud of some of the things that the board has done in the last four years. It seems that for the most part, we all were working towards a common goal, and that was to promote Trinidad, Colorado. More and more things have become available to promote in the city. You know, the Eiffel Tower of Southern Colorado would now be State Park. And I have a beautiful picture on my Facebook page of standing in one state park and taking a picture of the other one, and I sent it back to, you know, my friends back in Texas. I did get a lot of my experience and everything working with the Texas Parks and Wildlife and the Texas Parks down there with, even to the point of being a speaker, that their annual seminar, where they brought in, you know, their, they call them concessionaires, the different, you know, people that rent canoeing or concessions to restaurants or souvenir shops, and how they could come together to help promote their individual parks. And it is pretty easy. You've gotta sit down and discuss things. You don't criticize. You emphasize what you think is positive. And eventually, you know, you get a group that'll, you know, agree with the ideas. You know, it's, nobody's gonna agree on everything, but if you've got a good, solid, or good people, you know, the good staff's gonna float to the top. The board that I've been on the last four years, you know, is, many of them are very, very much experienced in promoting the city. They have some, almost to a fault, you know, we're so involved with the city, you know, they lived it and slept it, slept it. They were with the Rapid Lot, however you say that. And they only have, you know, it's, have an advantage over your previous candidate because I know she spoke about bringing in a firm. And I was one of the ones that was definitely against that. Because we have, in watching the staff, you know, as it's grown and added new people that are qualified, we had board members that were qualified. That is, when we, and I was so looking forward to, you know, the retreat, to get an opportunity to just brainstorm. I used to own an ad agency back, well, a long time ago. And one of the best things was bringing, you know, the staff in. Got a guy that came in and emptied the trash and swept the floors and bring him in and sit down and just brainstorm. And some of the ideas that you could come up with. And they're all available, they're all here. I've been around so many tourist attractions and things, and part of the reason that I landed here in Trinidad was because it was a fun place, a lot of things to do. I never really, didn't have a goal of getting involved and trying to, you know, empty my brain that was filled up with marketing stuff, you know, on the city, but it seemed appropriate. I really do enjoy it, and I enjoy talking about the city. You've seen what my background is, and I think you kinda know how I feel about the Tourism Board, and I think you see how hard it's gonna be to change me, but that's... I think you know where I'm, what I'm feeling is.
Chris, any questions?
So you're mentioning your talent, Mr. Miller. What specifically, you had an ad agency? Were you, did you ever do any promotion for municipalities like...
Oh, yeah.
Did you?
Oh, yeah. I, well, it was mostly through tourism. I consulted City of Canyon, who was basically the home for Palader Canyon and then the Black Texas. Yeah, and promoting that and working, you know, with the city, because that was, you know, that was a big draw for the city. You're talking about, you know, 70,000 people a summer coming through for one event. It brings it in. I worked when I was at the Civic Center in Amarillo. I was appointed to sit on the Convention and Tourism Council. And that was, again, promoting the city. I actually went with some of the staff from the Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce actually had a contract from the city to promote tourism conventions and stuff. And I would go on meetings, you know, where they were making a pitch to get a convention to come to town. And I was usually there promoting the city side. I, you know, ran for 25 years there, 300,000 square foot convention center that had exhibit space, meeting space, banquet room, two theaters. And it was a pretty easy thing to promote for the city because it was a very popular and very busy facility. Every time I spent in Wenatchee, Washington, since I retired first time, I consulted the city. They were interested in this new arena that they had and what to do and how the city could get involved. Wound up taking their management of the facility in-house, so they worked directly for the city instead of contracting outside. And that was, it was more of an internal promotion, but it was working again with the city. So I probably forgot many things that I've, you know, done with the city. I have over 300 concerts that I promoted with the city of Amarillo. Lots of, lots of things like that.
Other questions?
I wanna make sure I understand, you don't want, you don't think the city should have a professional marketing company help us to come up with a messaging of Trinidad? It sounds like what you would prefer, what you were saying that you felt was frustrating about the retreat is that you didn't have a chance to just kind of exchange thoughts among yourselves.
Yeah, it's not so much that I don't want it. I don't think it's necessary for the cost. You know, I mean, you look at the staff, Steve is at it, you know, to city staff with some of the people available on the board. And I can tell from, you know, listening to y'all, the questions you ask, you know, about the ICE Festival and things, there are several of y'all that have, you know, ideas and things. And we've got local people that can do the artwork. I, you know, some of the artwork that we've had in the past might have been, you know, hodgepodge back and forth, and it was just a lack of communicating, putting it together. But there's nothing wrong with it, so...
I wanna come back to something. Do you think it's important that we're able to measure whether or not our message is getting to who we are targeting? And if so, how would we do that?
Okay, that is, if you're a salesman selling radio, television, newspaper, whatever, that's the first thing the client asks. Well, how can we know how many people, you know, we're reaching? It's almost impossible to know exactly unless you can get a feel of who's coming in your store, who's coming to your town. That's why you want a good mix, you know, you want... Yeah, for Trinidad, you can, you can, you know, use the magazines, travel magazines, those that are inviting them, and mix them with, you know, radio that, you know, as they're coming, you know, through town, going to the state. Billboards, I'm a big believer in billboards, and they need to be good and simple, and they need to give you, even if it's two words on the board, something to make you think, hey, let's stop there.
What about QR codes?
Now, that is, that's one of the newest ways to do it, and that's one of the easiest ways to get people to go to your electronic media, to your social media, and that is excellent. It is, we just, we got a QR code sometime in the last three or four years that we started using in the print stuff that we were doing, that Marty was handling. That is, that's new, and that hopefully will give you an idea. The last, the last board meeting we had, Nissa had presented a proposal on an app that is a new product. Not a lot of cities are on it, but it sounded fascinating to me because it would be another way to track people that are coming to town, what they're doing, and if it's successful, that's probably gonna be one of the best ways to track it. But it's almost impossible to track radio, television, even print unless you try to put a coupon or things in, which are not always successful. The key is to, within your budget, do as much as you can to put, to plant the seed in their mind that as you're entering the state of Colorado, your first stop is Trinidad. And very few people can come into the state unless they're from the frozen north without coming through Trinidad. So you find a way, and that's something that you said in the discussion, you know, brainstorm, discussed at the retreat, you know, what we can, and we did. One of the board members in the past wanted to, and I think she talked to y'all about when you had sunflowers. Not a bad idea, it's not the only thing, but when you have fine things that are gonna make people think. And what I do like, and even in your black behind you there, the Eiffel Tower of Southern Colorado jumps right out at you. And a lot of people are using that, and that's a good way to remind people, hey, stop here.
Any questions?
I have no questions from all of our past discussions.
One of the things, and I think that was, made the answer, and the concern that he had, is that when they were putting that RFP out there for a marketing company, it was like $100,000. And I think that was the big issue, the cost of, that that would be, and what are we gonna get out of it? But I don't know. There is someplace else that'll cost less that can give us the same amount, because these companies will go out there and they will do, you know, and you don't know if you get a bang for your buck. And that's the big issue, and, you know, I think that's true with a lot of things.
If I can comment on that further, you can, you can make a pretty presentation, doesn't mean you actually know how to use it. And when you're working with people locally that you've already worked with, that they've done the street, they've done things, you know what they could do.
And one of the things that, you know, I've always been opinion is that there's nothing wrong with, you know, two people or three people disagree, you can agree, it's just how you do it. Because I always have said that sometimes for those disagreements or differences in opinions, if you do it properly, something better will come out of it. And I think that's the thing, that the approach that, I think all boards and commissions need to take, you know, really need to take a look at. And I think that that's something that we do as a council. We disagree on some things every now and then, but we always try to come up with something that's workable. And something that's better than maybe the original thought. And I think that's really important. I asked the previous person about the retreat, and you were there. What do you think was the reason for the, I guess you called the failure of that retreat? In a couple of lines.
Mayor, I wished I knew. I think personality conflicts were part of it. It's hard to tell. I mean, it was, I was embarrassed.
Okay, so I asked the same, the previous person as well, is that, you know, if this comes to fruition with the new money that we, the new additional 3% tax, how do you feel like that will impact the tourism?
It's gonna be, you know, unbelievably positive because not only can you help local events like the, I have some ideas about the ICE Festival and those things, but then what you can do to actually put together a plan and promote the city, you know, Albuquerque, Amarillo, and, you know, maybe some up north, I don't, I don't, it would take some discussion, but there's lots of things that could be done to put that thought in people's minds and then come this way. I personally would love to see a couple of boards doing here in Amarillo. I personally would love to see a couple of billboards doing here in Amarillo, here in Albuquerque, maybe off some other same directions that have a nice, simple message. We have one south of the town that with Marty's help and Tom Cress, we put together that just says, you know, experience the magic, Trinidad, Colorado.
Thank you, Chris.
You bet.
Thank you. Joe Kozlacz? Did you guys hit the mouse that right?
You nailed it. A bit of a resonating backside as all the recommendations.
I would have done it differently, so I'm kind of happy.
You know, I just say Koz. Apologies. Mariko, counsel, thanks for having me. My name is Joe Kozlacz. I am fairly new to Trinidad, living here close to two years. And I think that's actually pretty important to this position and candidacy because I'm here in part because of kind of the buzz that this city is starting to gain. And so I believe the next few years are vital to the city of Trinidad. You know, we're starting to have this public awareness, and we need to strike while the iron top and really capitalize on that. A bit about myself, I'm a co-owner of Tarantula Cycles. I've met a few of you guys before. That capacity here just around town. We opened last June over in the Old Street Depot, full-service bike shop. So I am a part of the growing outdoor recreation economy here in town. I'm also the director of marketing for a business-to-business technology firm called Navi. They're headquartered in Cheyenne, Wyoming. I've been with that company for about ten years, was recently directed or promoted to director. It's a forty million dollar company with a three hundred thousand dollar marketing budget. Finally, I am a board member for the newly founded Trinidad Trails Alliance. This is a four oh one C three nonprofit. We're focused on promoting, developing, and providing stewardship for trails in and around Trinidad. I do have just a few goals and recommendations I'd like to run down in terms of what I would accomplish should I be appointed to this board. Number one being to go digital. So we've heard a bit about this already. Physical media certainly has its place, the words are all right, there should be some budget allocated towards that. I would point out one specific, very effective piece of physical media that is driving hundreds of people here monthly, really, and that is Juan de Arroga's gravel field guide. So there is an element of value to a physical, kind of keepsake, something that somebody can hold. That being said, digital is extremely powerful. You can reach the exact demographics that you're looking for. It provides real-time data back to us that allows us to make decisions, react, and adjust accordingly. To me, it's a no-brainer. We're not doing enough in that area at all, and we can reach the people that we need to with more digital marketing efforts. A little side note on that is, of course, people my age or slightly older, Gen X millennials online all the time, not probably paying a lot of attention to things like billboards. And we are now the biggest spenders. So these folks create experiences, they want to go out and do things, and you're going to reach them through their phones. Secondly, we need local buy-in. So Don touched on this a little bit in terms of having a collective vision. I think we need local business owners, council, and other, just pretty much the entire town needs to understand that the tourism economy is just vital. We obviously have a relatively strong tax base compared to a lot of the county or even a lot of eastern Colorado, but we need those tourism dollars if we're going to survive and continue to grow and thrive. So we need to be on the same page. You can't have people closing their stores at random hours or closing during major events. Downtown should be thriving and hopping when we have people in town visiting for these major, major things going on. Third point, and this kind of gets back to that collective vision is establishing Trinidad in the public consciousness. So as I said, we're starting to have a bit of a brand out there. People are beginning to kind of know and recognize Trinidad, but we still have a lot of legacy baggage attached. You know, if I go out on this e-lip at Angel Fire, I have people cracking sex change jokes, you know? We're definitely known as the marijuana capital of Colorado still. And those things are fine. In fact, I think some of that's kind of cool, like the sex change thing hits on a progressive, certain progressive attitude that really speaks to some people. But we need to decide what is Trinidad, what does that mean, you know, what does that represent, and come up with a clear, concise message that we can bring out to the general public. Of course, I'm a little bit biased here, but we need to continue building that outdoor recreation culture and provide opportunities for that. This is going to continue to be a major draw for the region as Fisher's Peak continues to be developed. And this should not be limited to big events like the Rad. Great case in point, I just had thirty women on a cycling team from Boulder. They were here for four days just riding gravel. So that's hotel rooms and Airbnbs, that's meals, that's gas, et cetera. And that's just a random team. So we also get groups of three to ten in regularly, passing through the shop, asking for route advice and things like that. And it's not just cycling. I know Lee and Carlos over at Fisher's Peak Outfitters, they regularly have people kind of come in for fishing gear, it's their first stop on the way into Colorado, and then they kind of ask like, oh, you guys have fishing around these parts too? So there's other things that we can grow and let people know, you know, all the great outdoor activities that they can do in the area. And I do have a bullet point on there, you all know this, but that's big money, especially in Colorado. Finally, I do think general focus on events and returning to downtown is huge. I think Trinidad has a number of kind of crown jewels in downtowns among them, so it's not just the parks. But our history and our culture and, of course, the architecture are awesome. And so focusing events in and around that area, I think is a really good idea. So that's kind of my overview, and happy to hear any questions.
Questions?
Well, I personally don't think the sex change jokes are a good marketing strategy, but besides that, besides what you mentioned, any other new conceptual ideas that you'd like to bring to the table to enhance the progression of tourism?
Besides what I've said, I'm not totally sure off the top of my head. I do agree that bringing in professionals, whether that's an in-house position or and/or a firm is a wise idea. As I mentioned, it's really easy with digital marketing. Actually, I don't think I remember to mention this, but it's easy to overspend, things like pay-per-click advertising. Having somebody who's not experienced running a program is an easy way to eat up all our budget. So I do think that we need some folks who know what they're doing.
You mentioned in your handout that you've been profitable at Tarantula Cycles from day one. That's a hard place to market down there. I mean, the location is off the beaten path. So what did you do to make that profitable?
I'll add a little asterisk, like so many businesses, the winter was rough on us. So January, February, we were in the red bike, they do have a couple hundred dollars, but I call that pretty much a break even, yeah. You know, honestly, part of that, I think, we're just in a really good position for that. People like that Boulder team, they find us, the first thing they're going to do is Google for a bike shop. So I do see among a lot of the local business community kind of just a lack of savvy in terms of the computer side of things, so making sure that you're discoverable online is huge. And so, I mean, I just get calls, the woman who runs that team called me up, found this online, started picking my brain about routes and whatnot. And they all rolled through the shop, bought a bunch of t-shirts, rented bikes because we just started rentals. One woman actually ended up buying her rental and taking it home. The other side is experiences, once again. So I've been speaking to that, and for us, we do all of our stuff for free, but group rides, and a lot of this is to engage the local community as well. But we'll advertise Facebook groups for gravel riders, saying, hey, we have this big adventure ride coming up in a couple of months, come down, ride this cool route, we're going to support it and provide, you know, food and snacks, and afterwards we'll have you to pizza, that type of thing. So I think just kind of my nature of being a cool, you know, cool local business, people recognize that it's like just us two in the shop, kind of trying to get this thing going. Something resonates there. And I think that applies to Trinidad as a whole. You know, this town, it still feels very authentic. I think that has to be part of our vision, where we aren't creating like a Disneyland, right? This is like a real place. And I think that people really like that kind of thing.
So you're a digital guy?
Mostly. I mean, the experiences are the opposite of that because that's going out and actually doing stuff. But primarily, yeah, that includes my corporate experience. Almost everything we do is digital outside of event planning, like things like trade shows, you know, or partner events, where we go out and actually meet and network with people. So that FaceTime is really valuable, without a doubt. But I mean, in terms of bang for your buck in 2023, you got to be online.
Thank you.
No, I think you're doing a great job. And I see you came to this community to.
Yeah, we're really excited to be here. It's a great place and a lot of good people.
As an aside, I wanted to share a personal story. When I found out about Trinidad and I came here and I was obsessed with Trinidad, I haven't talked to anyone who would listen to me, and one of those people is my transgender sister who lives in Chicago. And I'm talking and talking, and she goes, Aaron, I know all about her. I said, why? I have no idea. And she said, she explained the connection. But I've always been proud of that in our history because it shows that we are willing to accept people who are different, people who need help, and that's something that I've been proud of about this community. So thanks for bringing that up. I wanted to, what do you think this lodging tax advisory board, what would be its first job that you think it needs to do?
Well, I've been thankful to learn a little bit more about the intention structure because I wasn't totally sure how this is going to play out in terms of brand new board, what their responsibilities will be, and exactly what we will be tasked with. Because it's my understanding that the previous board was largely in control of the budget and actually going out and doing these things. It sounds like that may be the case again here with some level of direction coming from the city council and the mayor's office. So were that to be the case, I think the first thing we would do would be the visioning process, something like the retreat you guys have been discussing with any, you know, parties that we think would be good to include, to kind of come up with that baseline of, what is Trinidad, what are we marketing exactly? I kind of like Don's phased approach there where we focus on one or two things at first and then introduce more later on, especially because we have traction starting in some areas like the cycling side of things. So being able to kind of hone in on that and grow from there is a good idea. But yeah, I think the vision is step one because you can't go anywhere without having that kind of collective goal in mind.
So Joey, you mentioned, I want to put words in your mouth, but you mentioned something to the effect of you suspect or feel that a lot of businesses in town may not be savvy with online advertising. Is that something that you would think could be an extension of the tourism tax advisory board is to help businesses like gain that understanding? I mean, is that something that's done anywhere that you know of?
It probably is something that folks would do. And I'm not sure, you know, we're kind of looking at something of a hybrid between the, I can't remember where it's going now, but like the collective of businesses that do that type of thing on the road versus coming from the city side, Chamber of Commerce. Yeah, and so that is a function that Chamber of Commerce should be providing and in the past maybe has. I know Anissa Roth has been starting a series, and she's actually asked me if I would like to participate in kind of coaching businesses on things like that. And so Big Wire Media did a presentation that was open to the public, and that was only somewhat in conjunction with the chamber. And I think it's provided by the city as well. So I'd be open to it. I think it's a good idea because it does play into tourism as a whole. I think the key is making sure that if it's coming from lodging tax funds and the board, that it is focused on tourism businesses specifically and reaching outside of Trinidad rather than promoting, you know, what your meal specials are for the weekend to locals, you know, just as an example.
This next twelve-part question, I'll admit, it's, I know that being tourism focused doesn't mean mountain biking, but I enjoy mountain biking, and we have a lot of great potential throughout here, I would describe it as. In your opinion, are we, as of today, mountain biking or or biking destination? If so, what can we do to really increase that? And if not, what needs to be done in the chamber?
Mountain biking, absolutely not. Not even close to destinations, not enough trail mileage, there's not enough extended descent. Gravel biking, yes. And that team from Boulder that came was a great example. So it's different markets, and I don't have the data to tell you like who might spend more money or who travels more, that type of thing, and that's what a professional firm would be able to bring us hard numbers on. However, in terms of like next steps, you know, the gravel is getting there, it's snowballing, and that's what we're seeing at the shop in terms of people coming through, and it's really exciting because folks just show up, they've got, half of them have a gravel guide in hand, half of them just heard about us somewhere or from a friend, and they're just here to ride for a few days and explore around the area. And what's really attractive on the gravel side is expansive roads, like fifteen hundred miles of road, and limited traffic, and obviously the scenery is great. On the mountain bike side, I think the biggest hangup is land, and I would love to see the city acquire some parcels nearby and start seriously developing trails with urgency. As I said, like this is the time to strike. There is land available still nearby, and some of it's not that expensive. I know up towards the radio towers here north of town, there's thirty-five, forty-five acre lots going for under a hundred grand, and that's prime trail development. And I don't believe there's any kind of covenants up there either. So the State Park is going to be amazing, that will be a destination trail system. You can't get seventy miles of trail in one place in a lot of cities around the US. So that's going to be great, but at the pace that we're moving, that trail network won't be done for five, six, seven years. The P Trail won't be done until late this year, and there's no current plans to start any other phases in the interim. So I think that finding budget for that from the city side would be huge. And if we can do it where it's ridable from town even now.
I have no further questions.
One of the things, if we're going to become a destination point, you need to involve and bring the locals buy-in into this entire program. How would you recommend that, what would you do to bring the local people that have lived here, which is myself and Karen and those of us that have lived, how would you bring us into that program?
Well, we're already starting to see it, and that's also very exciting to me. I don't want to come in here to be very clear and say like, hey, I'm from Denver, and like this is how you have to do things or to succeed. You know, I'm interested for a reason, it's because I love whatever it has going on, and I don't want to wash that wave or start totally fresh. However, I do think it's time to take that next step and level up, uh, in terms of how we present ourselves, um, and the strategies that we take out to market. So that's the key, I think, in terms of local buy-in. If you're talking about just generally going on spreading a tourism message, you need to be able to make it very clear, hey, look, here's how you get results, and here's why we're doing this, and it's not just, uh, hey, we don't like your ideas. It's that we believe that this can be more effective. Part of that whole digital conversation is that data that comes out of it. And so being able to immediately turn around and say, well, we can see this was effective, we can see this wasn't, let's change, let's, uh, adjust the message or adjust the targeting, um, that's what's really valuable there. In terms of the outdoor recreation side and things like that, um, that's where I'm seeing momentum locally as well. And for me, as a business owner, that's very exciting, because, um, I can't get through the winter on tourism dollars, so it's never gonna happen. I need that local base, bringing in their bikes for two and a half and things like that. And already, we've seen the Rad, I've had three people come in and purchase a bicycle because they wanna do it this year. Maybe actually more like four or five. And so we're starting to get that local scene as well. And those people are gonna go out and they're gonna talk about Trinidad, and when they go out and ride somebody, somewhere else, and they're gonna say, hey, come ride my local trails, they're awesome.
Well, you know, one of the things that you mentioned earlier is that, you know, how do you define how, how well the marketing strategy that you have works? Because like I said, any medium that you use, it's kind of hit and miss. I like yours, you know, even the digital part of it that's kind of hit and miss too, but it is at least something that maybe you can measure. And it gives you some idea of maybe a component of who comes and why they come. So I think that's something that really needs to, we need to figure out how we can get maybe a piece of this type of meat from this meat, and a piece from this meat. Maybe come to some consensus as to what will work, of how, you know, what, what, what comes from the results of all those different mediums. And I think that's really important for the advisory board to, to, to target and to think about.
Yeah, I would agree, and some of that is, is working with the local businesses to be able to track things like vacancy rates or rooms booked, or, seeing if there's a large event, you know, do we actually see that revenue on the other side?
All right, thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
I'm going to, uh, been asked by one of the council people to take a few minutes break, uh, maybe take about five, 10-minute break, and then we'll come back.